Bonsoir tout le monde.
Good evening everyone. Thanks for your presence for our second evening of the budget discussion. I would simply need a motion, Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. From the number of people here, as I imagine, like no one that have to declare like a conflict of interest on the only item on the agenda. Same as yesterday, thank you. Now I would need a motion to adopt the agenda, moved by Councilor Paul Boudreau, seconded by Councilor Depay. All in favor saying five say aye, against nay. It's been carried, thank you. Now, for the item of the agenda, we will continue where we left last evening. And we were at the at the debt profile for the municipality. Mister CEO will be number six. Five, sorry, five, not six. Now, now we are where the mayor said we were supposed to be, so I will leave the floor to our finance director. So before we start by the debt profile for the general fund, I would like to share like the reserve fund you asked me yesterday. So as for the operating reserve, general reserve, 608,000. The general capital, we have 2.5 millions. The water operating, 1,100,000. And for the capital water, we have 1.6 million. So these are the amounts you requested from me yesterday. Thank you very much. Anyone who would like question on this or? Councilor Patricia Buchevarie. So which reserve it goes like when we put like set money aside for economic development, it goes for the the general capital reserves, so the 700,000. The 700,000 is to be used. We would like to use it. Thank you, that's good. So I will start like the debt profile for the for the general fund. So the first one, as you see, like so this one is really like the revenues. And I do not, and I don't see like the necessity, unless you see the necessity like to go line by line. It's it's really all the lines I could get the budgets like like I have the budget column 2024 and I put the one for 2024 according what we want to propose to you and then it's an increase either like for for the non-tax revenue, so it's 4%, it is for other like revenues, it's 2% increase and the tax base has a 5% increase just to be conservative. As the second part of the table, it's all the expenses like related to that we have to do like over the years. So with this one, we get at the end and it gives us like our debt profile and on the second page, these are all the other the long-term debts, like when we go like the capital borrowing board for our projects to authorize our project. And at the very end, it gives like our debt ratio for the general fund. And this fund usually we have to 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 be around 10% for the debt ratio. And 2025, 2025, we would be following the debt ratio. It's it's after like we will go above the 10%. So so we would have to to look at what we will do. So the growth we are seeing in 2026, if we looked, these are capital projects we so where we were leaning to. And that's what increase our debt, the debt ratio. And the same like the same as yesterday, as I was explaining, if we can get some funding, it will reduce the amount that we will be borrowed. Like the RDCC, what an example, the RDCC is giving us a good amount like for the five next five years. So if we allow it for one of the projects, we went to the commission, so we can reduce this amount. It will reduce our debt ratio for the next years. So that's why we should try to plan to see what we will do, where we will be reduced, where are we able to get some funds to reduce like the amounts we are asking to the capital borrowing board. So I I put the included the full amounts because we do not know if we will be able to get funds or not as soon as we're able if we knock on doors and we're able to secure additional funds, yes, it will reduce the amount to be borrowed. And it will decrease our debt ratio, so that's why we wanted to to present to the debt profile. Is to just to make you aware, like we have to do something and we have to knock on doors to get some funds. That's simply for this reason, like we we had the intention to present the debt profile. Thank you, do you have any questions? I think I will just say something as a question, just to I just want to make sure I understand, I understand things as I should do. So in 2026, we go like from from next year to 2026, from 8, 8 and a half percent, close to 14%. So it's because of the work that will go for the long-term debt. Exactly. As soon as we go to the capital borrowing board. So those numbers we are seeing. And of course, there are the new projects like the Bowbridge Extension, etc. But the 8.5, it's not like the the debt ratio with the fire station, Main Street or or Bellevue Street like that is part of the 8.5%. It's more like it would be the 114. So the fire station would be, if you if you look like the line like ministerial approval, like 230078, it's for an amount for a 20-year period for 10,600,000. So this is the one for the fire station. We do not put like the money paid before 2026. We did not put the this loan for 2026 because like the 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 fire truck for the fire fact, it will take like three years before we can get it. So so we will go like to the capital borrowing board, but we won't pay anything now. So that's where the financial impact will be feel. So that explains why we have, it's a big jump from the work we did to 2024. We start, we have to start paying for this, this, this work. A question from council member, Councilor Janice Comnier, thank you, Mister Mayor. I'm a little bit confused because I always thought was 20% like that, that's the maximum. It's 20%. So when we look at this, we're still like in the right zone because you you mentioned 10%, I wasn't sure. Thank you. Thanks for confirming with me. That's that's all. Councilor Patricia Buchevarie, thank you. You can ask, so the 4.5 millions like for for 2026, what what is it? So where? To the line plan borrowing. Because it does not include like the the Rec Center project, so we're not there yet. It's not there yet, like the 4.5, 4.5, 54 million, we should get some amount from the province to do part of this work. So that's why it's 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 included there. We should, we will receive some funds, but we do not have to pay like for the totality of the project. But this project, we want to go forward. That's why it's appearing there, but technically like the province, not the province, but the municipality must approve like as a request to go forward. Because we are getting some funds, we'll make the recommendation to go forward. The 4.5 will be real because we already have some projects planned for this amount. The 4.5 million is the same that was this year for the for the the Main Street because Maine designated the provincial road. So this is, it's a secondary road, like two years in the in advance, they promised some money for another section on on Main, on Main Street, so it's not this area of Main Street. So the project will be more than 4.5 million. This is our share of the of the project. So the Rec Center or the Bowbridge Extension Phase 2. So it's it's not included, yes, Bowbridge Phase 2 is there, we included it in the project. But the Rec Center is not there, so that's the only thing that wouldn't be there. All the other capital projects or purchases we need to do, it will be, that will require like a minister. 2025, 20, it will be like in another budget. So we included the one for 2026 because we know we would get some funds. But we have to, we will, we'll think the council will not send money like that we could get. So it will should be, so it will be more than 4.5%? Yes, the project has, one, the project was not, did not go to tender. So the cost of the project could be higher and two, there could be other projects. So when we do our work with the asset management and we do like a concrete analysis for the real needs of the municipality. Yes, we could have something else added to the list, thank you. Councilor Renan Comnier, thank you, Mister Mayor. So the the last slide like you presented for the capital projects, we are talking about them. I do not want to confuse them, but we're talking about your request for 22 millions in total. So what Carol did they present us? So in 2022, how many are we talking about in that table? You're talking for 2022? But she's saying like so I will look is all the 2 millions in this? Is it part of that table? So we will present later, it's it's already in the table, it's a section like forecast loans. One, two, three, four, six, six different things. So the 20 is in the second table of the document, document five. So there's a forecast for a ring, so okay, that's a better news. It's not as bad as I thought it was. Councilor O'Brien. Emil O'Brien, okay. Thank you, Mister Mayor. So the debt ratio, the maximum is 20%. So it's 20%, so where are we? Are we in? We'll be at 8.25, 2025. But it will be close to 14% in 2026 and close to 17% 2027. Is the municipality approves what we want to do like and there will be other like capital projects this year. Possibly like for 2026. That's what I wanted to know. We invested some money, a lot of money and we see what is the the financially impacted. Even at 17%, like it's enough, like we will not be like when you're 17%, you don't, you do not have another 10%, you can borrow. That's good, thank you. Any other questions? If not, document number six. So we see what is the budget for 2025 in terms of the irregular expenses. So this is a total budget, of course, as I mentioned yesterday, we will get more into detail, but it give you like a global picture of where we're at. And and I think like the finance director did not like prepare like a detail for revenues because the revenues are straightforward, but you prepare like the detail expenses. So as for revenues, well, we see like what we, what we are proposing for for revenues, revenues for the municipality with the scenarios we we proposed to you yesterday. So it gives you really a snapshot on one page on the revenues and expenses, which type of category. As for revenue, I'll explain that I'll be, I'll use this page to explain. So the gap between revenues and also for expenses, like I will go into the other document that is more detailed. As for the administration, well, the difference we have like it it comes from from circular material. So these are revenues we will be receiving from this program. Economic development, well, there is an increase in the building permits. As for the line for finances, the revenue like we have to recognize from the previous year for 2023. And the other major gap is is from the warrant. But for those, we did not follow like in administration, we have an increase of 358%. It's it's a big grant from circular materials for waste collection that explains like this, a big gap. And it will be at this level over the next few years, essentially. Question. Questions on revenues, Councilor Janice Comnier. So mention like a bigger, like transportation at 41%, so what what are the changes? Where do they come from? Transportation revenue, it comes from what it is, like it's the billing we do for the water service for the administrative salaries and public works were executing like work exclusively for waterfront, when they're taking care of the treatment plan. So their salaries, it's billed like to the waterfront, so it becomes a revenue for the general fund. Thank you. Essentially, they'll spend more time, more time on the water infrastructure, that basically, that's what it means, so we'll pay the, we'll pay more. That's good. Question on revenues, Councilor Emil O'Brien. Thank you, Mister Mayor. On the third line, the fire, 148,564 dollars. Is it the revenue we're paying the fire factor? Is the revenue we are receiving from the services we are selling to other municipalities? So we are selling services to Capacadi, we're Maple Hills, Beau-Solay. So we we build them, invoice them for those services that we offer for their, to cover their territory. It's more the mutual aid because we're responsible like for part of the territory, which is not part of our territory. So we 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 build them like a fee. Will we see that? So what the the town pays the fire factor, it will be under the expenses. So you're good. Councilor Patricia Buchevarie. It's not a big difference, only 3,000 for recreation tourism and community service, did we get a grant in 2024? Was it some, we were forecasting less from 519,516, while there are well, some revenues we will not have this year because some revenues were they were for activities like we will not necessarily have. And they were reduced. It's not a lot, but it's just like that we have a revenue, it seems to be slower. So it's and most of it, it comes from the summer camps. So revenues from the summer camps that were reduced. She said she is looking really, really quickly. Mainly like these are like the revenues from the summer camps. And it's mainly at this line, it's because we have less or our people are less interested, some of them like it's surreal. What we saw last year, so we said last year like we we forecasted a certain number of youth. So we go with the lowest one. You always ought to be very conservative with your revenues because if if you if you spend money to support it, if you don't, do not have the revenue, well. So it's it's a double-edged sword. And maybe Julie can add. And just to continue on summer camps, like the activities happening at the beginning of the season, our employees are more like assigned to those activities during the festival, so the accessibility is not as present. You bring, so it's not as safe to bring the children, so we have less staff. So we maximize like our efforts like for for the festival programming. And of course, for the grant, the funding for the transfer payment. So this is a core grant, like we we get like 20% less, it goes from 107,000 to 87 because it won't exist in another two years. Councilor Emil Christian on revenue? Thank you, Mister Mayor, so 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 numbers, it's not, it's not my thing, so. It's simply to understand that the fourth line, like on expenses. We're not on expenses yet, we're not there yet. She will explain like the expenses first. Councilor Renan Comnier, question on revenue? Thank you, Mister Mayor. On the finance, maybe you might said, I did not hear. There's an increase of 60, 14%. 614%, I'm sure you mentioned municipalities, we have to recognize the revenue, if we have a revenue or deficit, it has to be recognized like two years after. So this is the revenue for 2023. I have the surplus of 2023, I have to recognize in this year. For 2025, I mean. I mean, you had a question, I think we are there, we are on expenses, not yet, no. Yes, this is the director, so for expenses, we'll we'll switch side. We'll go to the the other document, the document number seven. Or the other document number six, this one here. After six, it's six again. So unfortunately, it's it's you can expand it, question on revenues, Paul? Following of what Renan? 701,000, so this was a surplus for 2023. Is it wise like to prepare a budget if we have a surplus? So for the expenses, so should have been out of, is it, why is like of the two years ago surplus? I have to show it like where we put them like for expenses, so what we we decided to. So we did, since it was a revenue, when I will present to the expenses, I will show you, I'm showing this revenue, that revenue will be transferred to the reserve fund. But you know, we do not intend to use it in the expenses. We want to keep it, it's a revenue. And to answer this question, of course, it's a double-edged sword because we're starting an expense that is a continued expense and then you have to support it the year after and the revenue is not there. So you see like the the you see that line for revenue and see expenses will be an expense that is going to the reserve fund, so to cancel it. We are creating like a rainy day account, like a sport. To my point, we are not here like to make surplus. Absolutely not, no. We are there to deliver services, it's just to show. But by law, we have to declare this. I agree with this. If we did not have the 791,000 dollars there, so the column would be quite different. I so understand. No, he says it's not too good with numbers. You should not rely on sporadic revenue to make a continued expense. You could, you could do an expense, sporadic expense, let's say like thank you. On our expenses, the second number six document with small numbers. So the first section, we're talking about legislative services. So the section, so these are the first two lines, like the and the gap we see like it's a 3% increase and it's based on the average of the last 12 months of the IPC. So we we added like an increase and we also like increase like the expense account of $300, the counselor and staff. Well, it's it's exactly the same as mayor, the 3% increase, which is like the the average of the IPC like over the last 12 months. As for the counselor others, so we have we have an increase like for the $3,000, it's equivalent, it's it's a $250 increase per a counselor. So I could go like line by line. And we'll take like the legislative is a small block, like if you have any questions on this one? Question on legislative services? I have a quick question. So we'll switch. For counselor other, like so these are expense accounts? 21,000? These are so for the for the 12 members of the council, 21,000, 1,750 per a counselor? 1,500. We increase it to more because we already had the spent some amount, so the last summer. And why did we did not keep like the $500 increase like we allow in 2024 is because the event for the 75th anniversary of the festival, so in principle, there were more activities in 2024. That's what we we said like when we prepared the budget. Any other questions on legislative services? So this part is quite straightforward, administration, let's go. As for the for the staff, well, it's the 3% paying. Pour l'employé, il y a le 3% de payage. Nous avons ajouté une quantité à discuter, je ne sais pas, comme... Ensuite de la discussion, c'était la discussion, donc nous avons ajouté une quantité et c'est dans elle. Mais nous n'avons pas fait les calculs exacts pour la nouvelle échelle de payage. Mais nous anticipons que ce sera moins comme l'échelle de partage de l'après-midi. Mais c'est là où les... Les ajustements de l'échelle de payage sont inclus. Et l'addition d'un rôle, si je me souviens bien, c'est le rôle pour le... Pour le... Non, pour la sécurité, oh non, il n'y en a pas.
C'est la différence entre le 3% et la quantité des ajustements en termes de l'échelle de payage. Pas de questions, nous continuons. Ensuite, c'est un bâtiment officiel. Il y a une différence de 51 000, en plus de l'addition du second étage et le rental du second étage. Après ça, c'est les services administratifs. Désolé, l'interprète a raté celui-là. Nous avons acheté un consultant pour 12 000 $. Les 12 000 $, c'est par la semaine. Et il y a une augmentation de 29 000 en termes de loisirs, dépenses pour le loisir. Il y a beaucoup d'essais ergonomiques pour nos nouveaux employés. Qui sont arrivés en vigueur en 2024 et pour qui nous avons fait des essais ergonomiques. Et nous planifions de faire ça en 2025. Donc c'est l'augmentation et c'est la différence dans ce budget. Ok? Ensuite, maintenant, c'est l'audit externe. Le gap est l'augmentation du taux de grant pour l'audit externe. J'ai mis les coûts. Qui ont été fournis. En termes de... Civil, relations civiles et communications, c'est moins de 10 000 $. C'est basé sur le coût du site web. Pour la ville. Et le formation et... Bon, la formation, l'augmentation vient de l'addition de la formation. Nous augmentons la formation pour les travaux publics. Nous voulons former nos employés. Sur, eh bien, sur diverses choses. Et nous avons acheté des formations pour l'employé. Les gens en comptabilité, il y a différents domaines où nous avons besoin de formation. Coûts liés à l'essai. Nous avons mis une augmentation de 12%. Mais nous attendons toujours pour le vrai coût de la province. Nous n'avons pas le vrai coût. Mais l'augmentation que nous avons mis dans le budget. Est supposée vraiment couvrir le vrai coût. En principe, il devrait même peut-être baisser. Ensuite... Services collaboratifs, services collaboratifs et services régional. Le gap est... Les chiffres dans le budget viennent de la commission des services régionales. Je n'ai aucune autre option que de mettre ces chiffres, il crée un gap. Et vous verrez... Nous verrons la commission des services régionales dans différents domaines en fait. Quand nous recevons les chiffres de la commission des services régionales. C'est lié à différents, wow, niveaux. Donc quand, dans le commentaire, quand j'ai marqué, basé sur le budget de la commission des services régionales. Vous avez vu la description sur la ligne de l'item, vous voyez qu'il est mentionné. RSC, ces chiffres viennent de la commission, je n'ai aucune autre option que de les inclure. En termes d'assurance, prix de prêt, c'est basé sur l'augmentation estimée pour l'assurance. Comme je l'ai demandé, je voulais savoir où nous étions. Conseil de Roland-Cormier. Les coûts d'assurance, comme je regarde ça, nous parlons d'une augmentation de 20%. Plus ou moins, peut-être 19 quelque chose, mais disons 20. Comme vous le savez, votre père, j'ai déjà amené ça au conseil déjà. Un peu plus tard, en fait. Il y a un service par la association. Une municipalité, Canoe. Je ne sais pas si c'est un bon service ou si ce n'est pas un bon service. Mais je pense que nous devrions regarder et comparer. Si nous obtenons ce que ça vaut. Nous parlons de 20% l'année prochaine, peut-être que c'est le marché. Mais je pense que nous devons aller au marché. Pour voir si nos prix sont compétitifs. Peut-être qu'ils ne sont pas. Et il pourrait y avoir une décision à faire après que nous ayons un peu de study de ça. En termes d'assurance, je dirais oui, il y a une ligne ici, l'assurance. Mais vous le verrez dans différents items. L'assurance n'est pas toute... Dans une quantité globale dans une ligne. Il y a un prix d'assurance pour l'équipement, pour l'équipement de récréation. C'est une partie de l'assurance liée aux travaux publics. C'est tout sur différents items de ligne. Et le taux d'augmentation n'est pas tout le même. Oui, pour celui-ci, vous voyez une 20% pour celui-ci. Mais peut-être que pour l'équipement de récréation, il aurait peut-être baissé. Voilà pourquoi nous devrions regarder. La pleine quantité et... Et ce que le marché pointe en termes de prix de marché. Nous pouvons certainement regarder ça dans les années futures. Et faire des analyses en termes de ce que les prix de marché sont. Elle n'a pas rêvé? Elle a répondu à votre question. Conseil de Paud Budru, vous avez une question? Nous achetons l'assurance, c'est le produit que nous achetons. Allons-nous à Tender pour ça? Je sais que le ancien compteur, je ne questionne pas la qualité de ce que nous avons maintenant. D'après la loi, nous devons aller à Tender pour une grande quantité comme ça? Il y a des exemptions. Dans le droit de la vente publique. Donc je pense que l'assurance est l'une de ces zones exemptées. Il y a certaines classes de consultants comme les ingénieurs. Quelqu'un qui peut, ils peuvent être exemptés à New Brunswick. Donc l'assurance tombe dans cette catégorie. Mais c'est toujours une bonne chose. Nous avons partagé ça un peu plus tard quand nous avons parlé de nos auditeurs. Nous ne serons pas prêts à tester le marché, mais c'est évidemment quelque chose qui est une bonne pratique. Que nous impliquons en termes de test du marché au cours des années prochaines pour avoir un bon sentiment. Pour s'assurer que nous sommes compétitifs en termes de notre vente, merci. Conseil de Shouad, merci votre père, je vois qu'il y a plusieurs personnes concernées par l'assurance. Pouvez-vous expliquer comment cela fonctionne? L'assurance, c'est votre domaine, non? Eh bien, vous prenez un dossier, comme pour une municipalité, c'est un grand dossier. C'est un grand dossier de vente. Ce n'est pas comme si vous alliez obtenir de l'assurance pour une voiture. Il y a en fait uniquement un marché faisant des municipalités et c'est le marché où nous sommes. Si vous allez trouver un autre broker ou deux autres brokers et la submission... Vous êtes bloqués par un, il n'y a qu'un qui peut aller à Tender, fournir un Tender. Disons Gogashamplin et vous voyez Westland et ils envoyent les Tenders à la compagnie avec laquelle nous sommes. Nous ne allons pas obtenir un Tender parce que c'est... Si vous n'êtes pas dans la liste, c'est une nouvelle compagnie, vous obtenez un prix. Quelqu'un de ce type. Ça ne fonctionne pas comme l'assurance personnelle où vous pouvez obtenir des billets de partout. C'est une grande chose quand vous voulez acheter autour d'une municipalité. Il y a des options comme le conseil de Corbié a parlé. Mais clairement, nous devons s'assurer que c'est un produit comparable. Que vous comparez des pommes aux pommes. Je ne connais pas Canoe assez bien comme produit. Oui, il semble que ils sont compétitifs, mais le diable est dans les détails comme vous pourriez dire. Donc vous devez vraiment voir si c'est un produit comparable et nous n'avons pas fait d'analyse jusqu'à présent. Merci beaucoup. May we continue? Donc maintenant que nous sommes assurés. Sur les services administratifs généraux, l'augmentation est principalement pour ajouter des équipements et IT logistique. Nous avons besoin de ça. Donc pour des grants pour des purposes environnementales et sociales. Vous devriez peut-être regarder le tableau des grants. Les gaps. Eh bien, nous serons capables de voir plus en détail en termes des grants. Je sais que c'est un document... De précédents années. Sur le tab, pour les grants. Nous voyons les gaps pour les trois derniers années. Et il y a une section un peu plus basse qui montre ce qui est nouveau pour 2025. Que nous avons mis dans le budget 2025. En 2024, il y avait une réserve totale de... Pour 2025, nous proposons que ça soit réduit par 8 000 $. Ce que je pourrais ajouter en termes de grants est les écoles. Il y avait une école qui était plus basse, la... L'école LGR, elle était plus basse et maintenant elle est égale pour 2025. Elle est égale à MFB et Cheyac Cape. Ça avait été la même chose avant, à un moment. Le conseil à l'époque avait décidé de le diviser parce que nous contribuions à leur fonds de scholarship. Nous l'avons pris de l'argent que nous, le fonds que nous avons donné à l'école, nous ne pouvons... Nous ne vamos pas éliminer l'argent que nous contribuons au fonds de scholarship. Il devrait toujours être là, en théorie. Je ne sais pas, était-ce que l'étude était payée? C'est inaudible. Ça est géré par la Fondation LGR. LJR, je devrais dire. Pardon. Conseil de Janice Cormier. Donc la première ligne est 2025, non? Pourquoi? Donc... Donc nous avons l'école qui doit être ajoutée là? Peut-être pas l'année prochaine, mais celle après. Pourquoi ne l'avons-nous pas ajouté quelque chose pour la balle de pick-up, etc? Pourquoi n'y a-t-il rien pour eux si nous avons donné quelque chose l'année dernière? Y a-t-il une raison que nous avons éliminé une certaine quantité? Quand nous avons ouvert les applications pour des grâces de communauté de l'organisation. Ça a été ouvert depuis longtemps. Ils ont appliqué et c'est pourquoi nous avons ces chiffres. La balle de pick-up n'a pas appliqué parce qu'ils ont une bonne situation financière. Ils veulent aider la communauté dans la ville de Cheyac et prendre des efforts pour améliorer leur situation. Et Audiwall n'a pas fait aucun demande non plus. Ça me préoccupe un peu. Je sais que nous l'avons ouvert, mais ils viennent toujours après, plus tard dans l'année. Et nous donnons toujours de l'argent de la réserve. Nous avons une réserve. C'est un peu plus bas dans le tableau, il y a une réserve de 8 000 $. S'il y a, s'il y a d'autres demandes que nous avons reçues après... Le période de demande est fermée. S'il y a d'autres demandes, nous aurons un peu, un peu plus. J'ai un peu la même question en termes de Santa Cruz Familia de Bosa Jura. Ou le centre de crise familiale. C'est une quantité annuelle que nous avons fait bien depuis 10, plus de 10 ans. Nous n'avons vraiment rien reçu. Vous devez parler au micro, sinon Harry ne peut pas vous entendre. Ce sont des fonds que nous stillons en train de faire. Et nous l'avons créé, l'un est pour la gala et... Il y avait trois items, je pense, comme je me souviens, je ne peux pas voir, la colonne est trop courte. Conseil de Patricia, oui, c'est ça. Il y avait le pitié et la gala. Et les 5 000, je pense que nous avons déjà donné cette quantité. Ça était en cours, c'était chaque année. Et puis les autres étaient séparés. La gala. Je suis rentré dans mes fichiers, j'ai la colonne complète. En termes de Saint-Valentine's Day, la gala, il y avait la gala. Pour la course de femmes pour 1 500 $. Il y avait le programme de pitié de 2 500 $ et pour 5 000 $ par an, ça a été de 2014 à 2018. Ça a arrêté en 2018. Nous n'avons pas le remis après 2018? Non, celui-là. Nous l'avons donné en 2023. Dans ma colonne, dans mon budget 2023, je vois que les 5 000 $ ont été donnés. En 2024, nous n'avons rien reçu, nous n'avons rien fait encore. Donc nous avons une réserve de 8 000 $. Et ça, pas prévue dans le budget, mais nous avons aussi une réserve supplémentaire. Parce que nous n'avons pas mis quelque chose pour le jardin de la communauté. Non, c'est là, c'est à peu près là. Non, pour la réserve, je regardais la réserve pour le jardin de la communauté, je regardais deux endroits différents. Ils ont fait une application spéciale. Donc nous avons 8 000 $ dans la réserve? Je ne sais pas pourquoi le centre de crise n'est pas là, mais je vais avoir un chat avec Crystal. Continue, Carol, s'il vous plaît. Quelque chose que vous voudriez expliquer dans le tableau avant de passer à autre chose? Une autre question, je voudrais savoir si dans les grants, vous voulez ajouter quelque chose? Voulez-vous ajouter quelque chose? Je le noterai et nous l'ajouterons. Je vais aller autour du tableau, alors, Conseil de Roland-Cormier. Il y a une nouvelle addition de 20 000 $ pour le hockey minor. Je suppose que quelqu'un a une explication pour celui-là, je ne l'ai pas. C'est partie des applications de la communauté qui a été soumise par la communauté. Ils ont soumis un demande cette année, c'est nouveau, comme le baseball. Et l'organisation philippine, tout est nouveau. Donc... Pour... Réduire le risque d'un accès à... Les tarifs de registration demandent un grant de 20 000 $. Et l'une des raisons est que l'une des arenas n'est pas accessible à l'association dans notre région. Donc ils doivent louer d'autres espaces et payer les coûts de transport pour les referees. Eh bien, ils espèrent ouvrir à la fin de janvier, c'est ce qu'ils aiment voir. C'est ce qu'ils aiment voir, c'est pour l'année entière. En théorie, je trouve que nous sommes très généreux ici. Mais en théorie, les 20 000 $... C'est une demande unique, une demande unique pour 2025, c'est une demande pour 2025. C'est à vous de décider si vous voulez l'accepter ou le réduire. En termes de raisonnement pour ça, c'est parce qu'ils ne fonctionnent pas dans l'autre arena de notre région. Eh bien, c'est l'une des raisons, c'est l'une des raisons. Pardon, monsieur Corbié. Eh bien, je trouve... Nous essayons d'aider tout le monde et je pense que c'est ce que nous devrions faire. Peut-être que vous ne vous en souvenez pas, votre père. Je pose la question à vous pour savoir si vous êtes conscient que la municipalité a été... Si vous savez, ils ont été... Je demande la même chose. J'ai reçu une application, je peux vous procurer les informations, il n'y a pas de problème. C'est juste 20 000 $, eh bien, nous pourrions aider beaucoup d'autres petites organisations avec cet argent. Nous l'avons mis là, nous avons aidé une. Mais avec 20 000, nous pouvons aider beaucoup plus. Je ne dis pas que nous ne devrions pas le donner, mais... Et juste une question, votre père, à travers vous, si vous pourriez le demander, le jardin de la communauté. Nous avons seulement donné 3 000 $. We've only given $3,500 last year? No, we gave $10,000. You see it lower down in the, in the grid? There's $6,500. That is for the rest of the $10,000. The $6,500 was drawn from reserve at the time. Okay, then we give them a total of $10,000. And this year, we're suggesting bringing it back to the 3150. And it was also part of the motion at the time when they made the request for $10,000, that it was for a one-time event. And then we come back to the 3150. Your worship, I will just say this. I know that I'm part of that committee. That committee is very active, so very active. They do a lot of things for many people. I think it's good for the community. And I'm convinced that they're going to come to ask us for more than $3,150. That's what the council decided, but I'll tell you in advance, they'll come for more. And the council will decide, no, I'm fine with that. They did apply under the cultural policy. There are many other funds with the community. And the 3150 reflects the motion that was adopted. And that we were generous with our, some of the community halls. We are there to help with them and we're there to help all of the organizations. But ultimately, you have the last word. If you want to change the figures in the 2025 column, it's up to you. I think we're just trying to understand them, there's no problem. It's not, we're not adopting it today. I just want to have the opinion of the other councillors. I know that minor hockey. There's lots of, lots of other questions. Thank you, Councilor Cormier. Councilor Emin O'Brien, thank you. In terms of sports, $41,000 for sports. Does that also include the tennis club? That's asking $7,500, that they asked $7,500 last year? Where is it? The tennis club is $5,000. We gave $5,000 before. But last year, we gave them $7,500 because they lost half of their sponsors. Well, they made a request for $5,000 this year, for 2025. Okay, I didn't know that. In terms of their shed? Is that included in there? This is for a donation for general operations. It's not for, you know, a building? Next. Councilor Patricia Burchver, thank you. For me, it's the $20,000 bucks that comes to my mind, that jumps out. I'd like to know, I'd like to see what Kapakadi is gave, is giving, if they're matching what we're matching, that would be $40,000. I'd like to see the budget for minor hockey. I can, yes, we can certainly get the budget. With the cultural policy, what we also do when we give grants, we, there are restrictions applied. Sometimes we say we'll give this to you, taking into account that you do such and such a thing. So if you have opinions on that topic, we can always identify them in agreement for the grant. It can be a one, a single time thing. And then, let's say you can't go over a certain amount. I have no problem giving money to minor hockey. But I want to make sure that the amount is used and that minor hockey will not make a $20,000 profit. You know, on the back of our other citizens. We can get some financial statements. And you know, if the community of Kapakadi is also contributing. Thank you, Julie. Mini municipality, we might also be helping minor hockey with ice time in the prime time that they use. They're not, you're not going to have young, young people playing at 11, 11 o'clock. They're charged a lot less. We help them in a lot of ways. I think that the council members are looking to see what it's for. If our partner, our neighbor, Kapakadi, if they are also contributing. I dare say that they asked both municipalities, but we'd just like it confirmed. And if it's just a one-shot thing, I'll come back with a recommendation. Thank you. Councilor Peter Bro, thank you, your worship. I think it's important when we talk of donations, it's more, we're doing more than donations here. It helps with community life. And imagine if all of those groups were not there. And it was all the town's responsibility, it would cost a lot more than that. I have no problem with the list of donations as they appear there. But I do find that the reserve is not big enough. I think that with the local service districts, we're going to see some requests that we haven't seen this year. And I'd rather see it in terms of donations. I'd like that to be increased quite a bit to 20, at least $25,000, $20,000. I think we'll go through that $20,000 quite quickly. It's barely one request and a half. I'd like, I'd like for the reserve to be increased. Thank you, Councilor Bro. This is something that we can look at adjusting. And I'll come to a number. Councilor Jeanne Escamille, thank you, your worship. Minor hockey, $20,000. I have some, a hard time, a bit of a hard time seeing that amount as a donation. I find our municipality is being asked municipality, is being asked $20,000 because they didn't approach a municipality, another municipality in time, maybe? I want to support them, but I want to see what the percentage of young people, how many young people sign up from Shadia? How many people sign up from their community and maybe do a percentage, a prorated percentage based on the youth from our community, rather than the $20,000? I don't know what they've asked of Kapakadi. I just want to make sure that we're not spending more, but that we're paying out what's fair. Yes, in a fair way. It's, that it be equitable. But I do want to support our young. We're looking for more information on that item. Second thing. We mentioned earlier that there are donations that happen every year, because they happen, well, every year. Going forward, I think organizations should make an application for donations each year. I don't think we should put a blanket, every year we give $5,000. And don't need to make a request, an application. I think it's important that organizations take five minutes to write us a letter. And that they do make these applications each year. I fear that if we start to do this, that the organizations will lose the pulse and maybe some years they don't need it. And do we give it to them anyway? That's just my, that is my commentary. That's my comment, rather. Councilor Jean-Claude Bertin, thank you, your worship. I'm not sure if it's here, but the old Railhouse Museum, Railway Museum. Are we making donations to the museum? It belongs to us. It belongs to the town of Shadia. Even think, same thing for the Maison Pascal Quarterier. It's inaudible. It's an expense in the budget. It's a, it's a, it's a different figure, it's in a different place. Maison Providence helped to buying two bike racks. This is after we buy the rack. You don't buy that annually unless you need more than two. Bike racks? Inaudible. I don't know. Councilor Paul Budre. For minor hockey, I find it's too much. $20,000, I've never seen an application like that. Is there a limit? When you send an application for a grant, they could have asked for $100,000. Well, I'll ask you the same question. Have you, have you already seen an applications for minor hockey that are using the arena? No. It's a first. $20,000, I find it's a lot. How many registrations in minor hockey? That's a good question. I will ask the question, I'll come back to you. And how many young people are from Shadia? If you see all the others combined, soccer, $3,000, baseball, $6,000. It's like two times as much in the total of other. I'd like some answers before. $20,000, wow. Inaudible. If I might add, I sent a message to the CAO of Kapakadi. They made an application for $10,000 to help pay the cost of an employee. And the council did not accept the application for an employee. They have a full-time employee. Minor hockey has a full-time employee. They asked for a grant to help to pay. Registrations have gone down because there's not enough ice time. There's, so they still have to pay the salary of the employee. I assume that they've done the figures. One third, two thirds. That being said, for us, the application, the request was for $20,000, Kapakadi was $10,000. And Kapakadi did not accept the application. My last question. We'll come back with something for 2025 on that topic. Carol and myself have already spoken about it. So a bike rack. It's to park your bike outside of the building. The, their employee uses their bikes a lot. It was a problem for parking.
Their bikes, so it was a parking problem? Seniors in our bikes, with e-bikes, why do you see more and more seniors? And this would be more like for Carol, café. See, like we have a $500 donation and the zero, do we, do we help like the café at other places in the budget? Because I think we gave more than $500, I see, I'm under that impression. The café. So the locals, so we do not change anything for their space on the, on the second floor. So I didn't do like the exercise, but it's worth more than $500. I thought we had given them like more than $500 cash, but unless I'm mistaken. For the café, like, they were under the cultural policy. And under this policy, just to tell you in advance, you'll see like a global amount for the cultural policy. It includes like programming and also like the grant program. So we will not necessarily see all like the grant requests of this amount. Because once the budget for the cultural policy is approved, the committee will be able to meet and assess those requests. At least it's there for 2024. It's not something I Any other question? Councilor Ronal Cormier, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like for the bicycle rack, for that request. I take for granted, it would be like the bicycle rack for the lobster, no? Because a bicycle, the lobster, they cannot accommodate a lot of bicycles. And it would be for another style of rack to really help them. And it's a nonprofit organization, so they can make, submit a request. It's a nonprofit organization. On paper. I can tell you that. That's all I will give you. I will not go farther. I leave this organization, I work, I work with the private organization. The question I'm asking though, I'm not saying they're not entitled or not. I see it as an employer, a good employer. At one time, it was a good employer in the region. And they're offering, giving a lot of jobs. But I see it. If we, if we give a grant to this employer for a bicycle rack, I'm hoping we'll be able to open like the other employers in our municipalities for a bicycle rack. The bicycle rack, probably yes. Because there's, there's a lot of employees, like they come to work on bicycles. This is a reality like for this type of employees. I'm ready, like to support that, if my colleagues are ready to support like bicycle racks, I'm ready to support. But we have to, we have to support it if we get 22 requests. We should support 22 times, in my opinion. We cannot treat like one organization better than the others. So I'm asking, think about it. I don't think you're ready to support 22 others. But if you're ready, well, I'm okay with that too. Thank you, Councilor Cormier. Councilor Borchver, thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the café, I see $500, but maybe not in the budget, but in the financial statement, you see like the in and out, like for the rent, for, for their space upstairs? Because it's our share, like to the café. At least it will be accounted for, so it's at least if somebody comes in and say, yes, we give someone to a café, well, we give them like a space that costs maybe $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 per year, I have no idea. Just to put it like to the rent revenues and we support café. But we had just had to add a value to the donation. Councilor Paul Budro, so so for your question, like the town like gave some grant, like a lot of bicycle racks. So like on McDonald's, like downtown pays a third. And the town pays a third. It's a very good initiative for active transportation. So the reds, the racks you see with the lobster, so the town helped a lot, if I'm not mistaken. So I'm supporting this. And the tourists, the tourists are mentioning it, so it's a good initiative, like the town took with downtown Shadia. So I see with private business, Toby's McDonald's, everything. Would be like a third at the time, like it was a program we had to equip the town with bicycle rides, I guess. Just to, just to tell you, thank you for the institutional memory. Anything you would like to ask, and then just to add, I don't want to take too much time on bicycle racks, but like the point you said, like I submitted a request, it's a nonprofit organization. So we installed them because we thought it would be good, like for the visibility of the rack with lobsters. It would be welcome, and I think Maison Providence, Providence House did the same. It's because of the logo of the lobster that is on the rack, so they think it has some kind of sense of belonging with all the seniors living there and the families coming to visit. So they see it as an addition to their property. It's for this reason it was installed. Thank you. Councilor Jeanne Escamille, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So like this evening, it's it's a public meeting. Can we make a motion to our budget to remove things this evening or we submit the request? So how the minor hockey, can we take a decision to say like removing it? But it's only, it's only ratified once the budget is adopted. So it's more like discussion per, by consensus. So you can decide, would rather see like XXX, Y? And it has to be ratified. So once we adopt the budget and for these amounts. And I understand, I would like to adjust the one for minor hockey. But we will have the information and we'll be more familiar with the subject. If I can make a recommendation, if you're not ready to support minor hockey, we can take this amount. And maybe like, like Councilor Bo said, to put it, like part of it in the reserve fund. If you still want like to, to, to support, to decide what you want to do with the request. Are you ready to give a certain amount? Like this amount or a different amount or nothing at all? So we would need to have those discussions. It's just for now, like we did not have a clear idea of what was the numbers. So maybe we should wait until we have more information. I think that would be the consensus, a consensus, so more information. But also like our neighbors do the same. Understand that, but what's the request? But maybe the request was focused on one thing in particular. So we'll make the distinction. We'll play together or we'll not? We'll play together or we'll not, we'll play it out. So the information I got from Capacadi is the request would not be retained by the council. So, on the big budget. Not only the donations. There's always discussion with donations. We would be at the line for, for R C M B. Policing and protection, protection services. We have R C M B, so there would be a gap, a hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. So this increase is. It's an increase. I put like a four percent increase, but. But we still not get like the numbers from the province. Last year, was it more than four percent or? No, last year it was a three point five percent increase. Because we never want to look at the bill when it was coming, when we was in the mail. Like, when I prepared the twenty twenty four budget, we still didn't have the numbers, so we got them after the budget. And we had a gap of sixteen thousand dollars. Was not too bad, I mean. So I said, well, be more conservative, so I will put the four percent increase. And I was told I should be okay with that increase. Councilor Patrice Bouchevary. It wasn't for the R C M B, but it's for the environment, we put zero, three thousand, seven hundred and fifty. So it might be another item for environment somewhere. Where do you see environment? We're not there yet, so. Would be included in the grant. In the grant line, like, we have sport, culture, education and other, but all of this, like. It goes back to the document we, we look at earlier, the grants. Because all the, the table for, for grants, like, minor hockey. So when I, I give the, submit the budget to the province, it has to be like a separate, either by sport, culture, education. That's why, like, it's in different lines. So all those lines is like a summary of that grant sheet. And the three thousand, a hundred and fifty, that's for the committee garden. That was part of other. It's just i- in another line, so. It's because of the environment committee, so will there be any expenses? Will there be additional expenses? These would be like for, for grants, so it would be part of the reserve fund. Let's say we have a day of activities or awareness. The environment committee. Will look only on the issue. Are we adopting or not, like a bylaw? That will ban the pesticides, nothing else. We're looking strictly on this and they want to do some awareness. It's not a matter of awareness. Do we adopt the bylaw or not? It's just like, I might see like, I'm seeing a future expense, we'll have to announce something, but it will be up to the council to decide. It's not the committee's mandate. But if, something, it will be in communication expenses, for instance. And it could be a special project of the council or the Bundia Reserve. But there is like some possibilities for the council to still. To give other funds if they want to do so. Even if it's not only one item. Councilor Paul Boudreau, for police, I heard, like, it was supposed to be another, to add another officer? So an increase of hundred and four thousand, it's like, a police officer is like a hundred and fifty thousand each. No, it's not the word. Because we are with a provincial contract, it's based on our tax base. And the population. There's a formula that is presented to us and. And the province assigns like the police officers. So that's why we always favor like an approach with citizen, entrepreneur, to say like. You have to, to mention any concerns, like, through the authorities. Because the, the officers are assigned according to the, to the calls they get. If you never call. It does not create a call, as I would say. It's not digital, so they won't, they might not assign like any resources. So the more calls we make, the more like, so I'm really happy to see other officers. I wouldn't have, want to have a surprise to have like a three hundred and four thousand increase. Because the budget for, for R C M B does not pay directly the officers in our sector. It contributes to, to, to the officers here with the province. The province assigns them. Thank you, Councilor Janice Cormier. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to go back concerning the environment. I'm a little bit concerned because you mentioned that the committee's mandate is only to. It's for the municipal bylaw, but the first meeting we met like for more than two hours, we still discuss, like, to promote. Educate and, and maybe like to put incentives in place. It's more than, than just look into and say yes or no, because I think. I know what was the discussion, but the mandate, it's according to the motion that was adopted by the council, nothing more. The committee's mandate was very specific, like the motion the council adopted. So why did we spend two hours to, to discuss something else? Just trying to, to find some solution to see if there was any way to manage the discussion. Well, went in different directions at the same time. But we will need to go back and have. Frame those discussions. I think we had a discussion on what the bylaw, is it the only way to, to reach this goal? Maybe an incentive might be another way. And what works well. The two, the two could work in a sense, but. Can we bring a new motion to the table for, so that the committee might have? But like a bigger goal, because I'm really not interested to make ten, to, to make like a few hours just to discuss. I would like to bring like some kind of overview, like. And so in order for the committee to make up its mind, we need a broader discussion, like we started. And then to say. If we, if we want to do A, B or C. If there's A, B, C, D and B is the bylaw and, and we only want A or C, the committee can, can decide and then. We have to go back, they have to come back to the council, the committee can recommend things. But it's not the committee's job to implement this, but there will still be some money in our recommendation. So it goes back to the Councilor Bouchevary's point. The council will, will have to decide, is it money we'd like to give, like, that was the new initiatives? Do we need like to, to bring another motion to, to ensure like the, the, the committee has something broader? That we bring something that's worthwhile and it, and we close the file discussion once and for all. Like, I don't want to bring like the way we recommend a bylaw, you do not recommend a bylaw. And to recommend some actions, you can go with the idea, like, we want to do A, B, C. Or variety of this, or the committee will not give numbers for that committee. It will be up to the councils. Yes, we would like to proceed with the, the N C, for instance. And then we'll ask the administration to think about it. And put it in place, maybe party in twenty twenty five. We did not even start twenty twenty five yet, I just want to, I, I don't, I don't want to be limited to have. It would not necessarily be that line. I know, like, I just want to make sure. The next one. After the R C M B. We have the line other. For protection services and this line, well, it's mainly like the. Firefighters, so the, so the difference we have is the new, like, the, the new one from Chediac Cape. Protection, like fire protection for administration, we have. Actually, I did put in the explanation, so it was. I think it was not, not enough, so we'll, so we'll go to a fire station staff. So the gap for eighteen thousand, two hundred, it comes from the, the pay increase for the firefighters. Buildings and equipment, so the, so three thousand dollars increase for the fire detectors. So when I prepared the budget with Donald, I realized that the budget for twenty twenty five was under evaluated, like, according to the real cost. To increase the twenty twenty five budget to really co- cover our real cost. Position in other building, while we have this five thousand increase is for the, the, the dressing piece for the firefighters. So for the thirty, three thousand, like, for the, for the fire equipment, these are cameras. Thermal cameras, it, so we, we're able to, but for a few years. Our budgets, like, we're purchasing new equipment for our firefighters. And the equipment that were asked this year, those two thermal and major cameras. So these are, Councilor Paul Boudreau, would it be possible? To add an amount to the budget for other members? Could we have an amount for, for between the department, like, for the fire department? To really have good, like, opening ceremony for the new station by September, October? Do something really good, like, to have some kind of reception or have, have a four or five thousand dollars amount this year? September, October, it seems to be going that, so would be the twenty twenty five budget. I would rather get like the money, so the, so the department could collaborate together or something really good for the, for the public, for, for the fire station next fall. Us to be safe with the budget. In October, we have a festival, so maybe we could put our energy and take the money from the programming that's already existing. And in the programming budget and also for the tourism budget for events, other. So we already have like a small reserve, but not to add something else. And if ever we need some money, we'll, we'll go to, to these accounts. I would like to be specific to this, to, to do something really nice, I forgot the relation. I think for the administration, they're, they're able to plan. So when time will, will, when it, time will come closer. Right now, like, the structure seems to be going quite well. I don't say the opening, we do not have enough time to do it, no, no. We're building a state, a fire station, like. For, it will, it will last for a very long time, so, so we will take the opportunity to mention it internally, we'll make sure, like. We, we can use other sources. That's a good idea. Councilor Emily O'Brien, just to add, like, to Paul comments, like, what you were mentioning, like. Do it, do it maybe dur- during the fire prevention week. Usually there's an open house, it's in October, so it would be the perfect time. Yeah, I, I trust Bob, I think it, it will be, the building should be completed, like a thirty years delay. I, I trust, I trust Bob. Fire prevention weeks, grand opening. Uh, the other question I had, for the fire station, two hundred and eleven, like, is it only like the? The firefighter's salary or something else? That, no, that's their salary. Because last year it was the amount. So they talk, they mentioned like a ten percent increase. So that's good, thank you. We will continue. Other protection services, bylaw enforcement, two thousand, five hundred, like, for the increase. This is a pay increase for the. For a, a, a bylaw officer. Then we have like for animal control and, and insects, so for animal control, well, we have an increase of ten thousand, nine hundred and fifty five. So this one is the, the increase for the contract we already have for, it's according for the contract. So the contract fees increase and that's the, the increase for the contract, we see. Now I'm following you. Animal control. Councilor Janice Cormier, so sorry, I have a lot of questions for. That's okay. When we're talking about. The bylaw officer and the control, animal control and, did we put a little bit more in our budgets for? For the possibility to. To expand maybe our bylaws, like, to our new, like, populations? Because I know the Councilor Michael Roy last year mentioned that. We adopt like a new bylaw in this area, so maybe we should be looking at the bylaws and add some bylaw that makes sense in the. In our new zones, is it something we consider? Or will we be limited like to the next, next budget? Right now, it's a service, it's a part of this, the salary is shared. Because of unsightly and animal premises and animal control, but the majority is accounted like for, as a local service for the. For the former Chediac. And if we add other services and other territories. For, for the bylaw application, we'll just share the, the bill more, we do not need to, to add, to add another amount. Maybe one day, like, you have, like, one, one officer is not enough, but, and we need another one. But for now, we're okay with one, it's just like a part of the salary share. So when we have more services, we might need another one. Councilor Renan Cormier, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I see like the total for, 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 for the bylaw officer, it was eighty four thousand. Animal control. Animal control, seventy one thousand. I will simplify this, really simplify this. So the person who's responsible for bylaws is five, five days a week, it's one employee. And the individual responsible for dogs, I not know how busy like they are or the organization. And it costs seventy one thousand dollars. Is it to our benefit to have one individual full time or working for the town of Chediac? And. So my question is, and I really do not have the answer, do we get our bank for our buck for seventy one thousand? So maybe I can answer this one. It's not, it's, it's not a salary for one officer. Part of this amount is accounted for the, for the animal control officer, but part of the salary, part of the amount is used for. To, for, for, to shelter animals, like another organization. And there's an amount in the budget, it's about twenty thousand dollars for. So there's a twenty five thousand amount, let's say a citizen. As a raccoon or, or something like that, so we will pay like to remove this animal from its property. It's not only like a dog control, it's really like three major expenses, like, that's it, total the seventy one thousand. The percentage pays like the dog catcher, the person who gave the service and the, and the percentage pays for the. The kennel, like, to, to house those animals and the percentage is for the, for the, the. for the pest so animals we have for a period. Thank you. Thanks for the explanation. So maybe all the citizens for from the Chediac ward, like got all those services, but I'm convinced like the world I represent, we have no idea like that's a service like to catch a raccoon or it's a local service for Chediac. This service. It's not a shared cost, it's a local service for the former town of Chediac, so where where it was the budget is more than that. There is no service existing for that covers those territories. And the only percentage that is shared with this, it's the animal control we will have. The cost that everyone pays for for a greater Chediac, so the so the cost is it's probably not the seventy one thousand, so we put all the service together like to to have that number. So my question is, what is the number? That that would be for? To bring like dogs, but any animal.
Animals. And the dog catcher. What is that? What are those amounts? Uh, within the seven one thousand. Inquiring minds want to know, as they say. I think it's one third, one third, one third, as I recall. Inaudible. And I would presume that the town pays when we house a dog or an animal. That's what that the percentage that is the kennel is an annual amount. Ah, it's a lump sum, it's a use it or lose it amount. Okay. And is it in our region at least? It's in Moncton. There are no more in the southeast region. There are none others. Oh, that's not true. There's babysitting, so no, it's not the same thing. There are some. Are we gonna be, are you gonna have the figures right now or have to come back to me? I'll come back to you. Thank you. Next, councillor Joël de Plé. Yes, this is for animal control as well. Uh, I'll say, I'll speak to it less than no, he spoke to it a little quite a bit. Is there a great big demand for this? I don't see dogs walking on the main street. I don't see dogs walking around the main street. Is there a big call for animal control in Chediac? It's often there are animals, the bylaws said you can only allow so many heads of animals, so many head of animals in your per household on the territory of Chediac. If the officer shows up and there's additional animals, you can remove them. They check that they're tagged, et cetera, and vaccination, lots of things can have an officer have to take away a dog. Uh, it's been two months I've been here, I've received lots of calls from residents who are not in Chediac territory who want this service because it's just at the edge of town, we technically can't do anything. We don't deliver the service. Thank you, I was not aware. There you go. I know that in my twelve years here, it happened two or three times where a dog had to be declared a dangerous dog. There's procedures in the bylaw for that and limits. It's not that we remove the dog, but the dog has to be vaccinated and all that. But the measures that the owner has to undertake to control their dog, if they want to keep the dog, our officer who handles that is very skilled in that. He succeeds in solving problems that would otherwise just keep on lasting. The council, it's already been a situation where you have to vote on, at the council, on declaring a dog a dangerous dog, it's happened. May I make a comment on the brigade before I go forward? I just wanted to mention that the fire department. The fire hall is coming, it'll be a new fire hall, it'll be ready in twenty twenty five. The ladder truck is coming, coming in twenty twenty six. As we had there, the population of town is increasing. The fire department will need to transform itself to a full time fire department eventually. Yes. Inaudible. Not for now, but meaning the long term, no. I'm not talking about right now, but it's coming. Well, still, you have to qualify it. I had thought to retain the services of a consultant to make a plan, as it is, we have no plan, to make that transformation. If we could hire, retain the services of consultant to make a plan, to issue recommendations and come back to the council, uh, to do some research on costs and all that, just start that way. Just so we can have a plan to follow for the next two, two years. Next few years. It's not a thing for tomorrow. The ladder truck is a big piece of equipment. It requires a lot of experience for a firefighter and that to get certified on it and everything. The only point I want to raise with all this, can we hire a consultant to do that over two years? Uh, could we do that? Well, listen, I think it's a good idea. Like the consultant that we say we want to do the business plan for the rec center, we don't know how much it costs yet. We have no idea what it costs yet. Oh, we will predict it's more than a little bit. This is specialized expertise. We can certainly ask this to staff, where appropriate with the fire department, what's the plan for the future? And it could be part of that, that we could mandate them to go that and down that route. It could be a part of the strategic plan to see that if it's a project that we would go forward with. I think it's a good idea, just continue to think about it. I think we can bring it forward. We can make it, bring it forward a bit, a bit more. It's good, it's good to bring it forward now as opposed to in three years. If I might add, councillor Carmier asked a question. I found in the budget, seventy one thousand dollars, there's five thousand five hundred dollars that goes to the kennel. There's twenty six thousand that goes for the dog catcher. And there's twenty five thousand that goes for wildlife control. Past animals and the rest of it. The province, the former local service district were charged zero point one three cents for assessment for services for the SPCA, so the rest of it is that revenue, it's included in there. So the residents of of those boroughs pay that amount remaining. It's less than what it was before. Thank you. So the fifty five, if I understand correctly, the twenty six thousand, I understand the twenty five thousand is going to an organization? The wildlife control? No. It's a private organization, a private business that we hire, we have a contract, a pest control contract to remove with a company to remove those animals. That's that's for the region of Chediac. That, yes? The residents of Greater Chediac pay the twenty six thousand and five hundred, that's for the both services, but the wildlife control for the traps that you mentioned, that's the former local service district. Thank you, now it's clearer. Inaudible. Councillor Joël de Plé, thank you, your worship. So the contra, the contract for the dog catcher, it's like a snow contract, if it doesn't snow, it costs us twenty six thousand bucks. Okay, thank you. You can't really plan for when you need it, I guess, in some sense? So next, madam director. It's a training, it's a training opportunity at the same time, we want to know all the details. So here's regional collaboration. That amount is from the regional service and transportation service admin. I'm going to give you four lines. Ask you look, personal administration, a gap of two hundred and fourteen. Workshop work sites and other interpreter apologizes. Summer maintenance and removal of snow personal interpreter apologizes, the figures are going by too fast. This is related to salaries. Between twenty twenty five and twenty twenty four, this is related to the salaries for public works in those four categories. The way that I'm showing the budget, we're evaluating salaries and the breakdown of salaries according to those four lines. I, according to the trends as I'm doing the budget, I took the salary trends where they were broken down for public works. If let's say, for payroll, it was twenty five percent was in buildings, fifteen percent was in summer maintenance, I did the same breakdown, I took that breakdown. I took the same percentages to divide the twenty twenty five budget, so automatically it creates gaps related to twenty twenty four. The increase that we're seeing, if you add them all together, it comes to the same number and it leads to an increase of three percent as per the collective agreement. That's just to explain, it gathers four lines, we gather it like that because that's how the province wants us to present our budgets. Yes. We don't have much choice. Perfect. Councillor Paul Budro. So for salaries for public works and everything else. Yesterday, you mentioned that for the gap in salaries, there are some recommendations, there's four different levels. And for the max, when you did the budget, where did you put in the salaries of the senior staff? You were talking about ninety five thousand to a hundred and thirty five thousand, Mr. CEO. When we talk about the admin, we added a hundred thousand dollars, it's not yet broken down because you haven't yet accepted their recommendation to follow the pay scale. If you follow them, we will remove that hundred thousand dollars and we'll put the actual amounts that will cost, it'll be less than a hundred thousand. We put an amount in there for now as a placeholder. It's not located in there, it's in another line item in total until you accept. If you decide to accept the pay scales, then it will be broken down. I was curious, Eve, in terms of how it would be broken down. So for the salaries, there's a three percent of salary increase that we had to put in. Next, there's the addition, in relation to twenty twenty four, there's the addition of the manager of facilities that we didn't have in twenty twenty four, now we have to put twenty twenty five. There's a superintendent of operations that wasn't there in twenty twenty four either, these are positions that was not foreseen in the budget, but it's a position that was created in twenty twenty four. But now we have to put it, it creates a gap in relation to the twenty twenty four budget. These are positions that were not included in that budget. Great, councillor Petricia Warkzewity. So you spoke of the position of manager, but all three new positions that we asked for are in there, they're in the budget, it's just a hundred thousand. The hundred thousand is for the pay scale, that one's not there, but the three positions requested are included in the budget, not on the same line item. But if I go with a balanced budget, they're there. Yes. And the three new positions are added. Yes. Go ahead. In terms of engineering, department, we have reduction of a hundred seventy thousand. Basically, it's a reduction. It's for studies, it's the patch position plans and stormwater, it's a part that we had put in twenty twenty four budget that it wasn't completely accomplished. And part of it, we're pushing into twenty twenty, into twenty twenty five budget, but there are costs that are lower than foreseen. There's less, there's less work to be done, it'll cost less. The cost was also reduced. Ah, okay, in addition. So you drive a hard bargain, that's good. So in terms of buildings and equipment, and their general equipment, there's a gap of two hundred and eighteen thousand. That, the way you explain this is that there's a hundred twenty five thousand, the budget that's foreseen to buy small equipment. There's some repair in terms of the municipal garage that to be done to the tune of fifty thousand dollars. And we increased the budget for maintenance of equipment. It's been two years now that the budget for maintaining and repairing vehicles for public works equipment we're always, we spend the budget because it costs more. So we put in an increase of forty thousand this year for twenty twenty five budget. So when I was looking, it makes your budget more realistic. Well, yes. And we won't have to knock on the door in the council, well, we need more money. And when we increased, when I was looking at it, I said, why are we so off? I remember when I prepared the budgets last year, it was my first financial year for municipality, I'd gone back. I went with the twenty twenty years for twenty 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 twenty, twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, two, twenty twenty three, so that I might get a sense of what the trends are in terms of spending. I don't know why, why are we going beyond, over the amount budgeted? We were affected by COVID, we have less. I said the expenses are increasing, but we have more roadways. This is one of the explanations. Ah, yes, COVID was, had an impact. It's a normal thing. Next line, workshops, work sites and buildings. There's an insurance premiums of nine thousand two hundred dollars. And we put in some tools for the garage, for that, there's an amount of six thousand dollars to buy new tools. Now, we're in roads and streets, summer maintenance. The increase of two to fifty nine thousand dollars, this is related to repairs. We need more budget to do the required work. More streets and more. If I might add, the expenses that Caro is presenting are local services paid unique only by residents of the town of Chediac, not a shared service. Councillor Alacomi, thank you, your worship. So a few months ago, I did made a motion so that we might get signage to present the new limits of the new municipality. Council approved it. Maybe it's not under that, but is it somewhere in our budget? Yes, it's part of the budget that, that was foreseen for the website last year that we recovered, that we saved. It's money that we kept. There's an item that we brought back. I don't remember the amount. It's called branding. So branding is the brand image of the municipality. We're going to try to use that amount that had been set aside for that and to actually complete that project. We're going to try or we're going to. No, we're going to do it. We're not quite sure yet of the exact amount that it will cost. We'll cover everything exactly. We hope so. But for now, I'm in talks with a comms company for that. So for the branding, as you, as you were calling it, so your budget was, how much? What do you have in your budget? I think it was 65, something like that, Caro. Maybe less? Maybe less now? But there were adjustments. Thank you. Given that we're talking about this, is it something that will happen in next spring or this winter? As early as possible. That's even better. As soon as possible, sorry. Even better. Great. Councilor Janis Kormier. Well, it's a bit further on, your worship, the sidewalks. Well, let her get to the sidewalks first. So now, now snow and ice removal. There's other, there's an increase of $14,000 that increase can be explained by an increase the cost of, for $10,000 for salt and sand. We increased the budget for property damage. It's in this amount to $4,000. Well, yeah, the sidewalks are just a few lines ahead before. It's $300,000. It doesn't change. There's no gap. That's why there's no, there's no gap. I'm explaining the gaps. If we have the 2025 and 2024 budget that is the same, it doesn't create a gap in the budget. So I'm explaining the gaps. It's explaining where things change. Well, Councilor Janis Kormier on sidewalks. Thank you, your worship. I would like to create a gap for the sidewalks. Is this for repairs? This is for repairs. We often hear about sidewalks every year. We always have the same amount. It's never sufficient for what we actually need. Do we have a plan, a sidewalk plan, a five-year sidewalk plan? I'm talking to his worship. Is there a sidewalk plan that where we should maybe devote more money? I can add to this as CAO. Yesterday, I spoke in terms of ensuring that we place investments in the right spot. Right now, there's studies underway to help us to determine the right places to invest. There is a master transportation plan, master transportation plan being developed that will identify zones where we should be investing more to install sidewalks. We have additional, other construction projects and other capital works that, where we add sidewalks. We could spend full summer on the roads and the sidewalks, but we're not necessarily sure that we're putting it in the right spot as of now. We ask your patience. We want to present a properly detailed plan to make sure that we're investing in the right spots, not just in the places where people want. That means we should see a gap next year for 2025. Absolutely. Or 2026, absolutely. Councilor Paul Budaro. So for the 300,000, is this for repairs, Bob? Yes, repairs. Where? It's not determined yet. Well, if they put the amount of 300,000, it's the same amount as foreseen as last year. It's an annual line item and we assess things in the spring to see where, typically, there are sections on Main Street that we focus on. But it's done on, where the need requires. I'm a bit disappointed. I'm glad that the plan is coming, but it's very interesting. In the last three years, we put in nearly a million dollars in new sidewalks. We developed that, people like that. It's a bit discouraged that we're not doing any for 2025. The council can add and change things in the budget. It is simply the plan that we're presenting to you. I really want to focus on, we provide a profile, a financial profile. We have future, potential, the future expenses that could potentially change the dynamic of our financial situation. We want to make sure that we provide recommendations that are focused on the needs and rather than the wants. If the line of 300,000 was there for the, over the past few years, as you mentioned, the line, why was that line removed? As I mentioned, it's because we're doing a transportation master plan. We want to make sure that we put things in the right place over the past few years. I'm not saying it was a struggle, but we're not sure that we're putting things in the right spot or the most important places, the ones that should be added. We really want to have a calculated approach in terms of how we provide those recommendations to you who are awaiting the results of the recreational master plan, first of all. And that will help us to provide you recommendations. Okay, that will be filed when? Well, right now, we're thinking... Early 2025. Not very long. Uh, great. Councilor Patricia Bouchard. Three or four items up top. If we are going to pass it, we'll come back to it. Summer maintenance staff. Are those people, those are the people who mow the lawn and water the flowers? We haven't covered that yet? Okay, we, okay, no? Okay. So what is summer maintenance staff? It's the patching? Oh, on the streets, we're on, we're doing the streets. I'm sorry, I expand the screen. I didn't see it. Look to what's left. I expanded it. It's so small. I'm doing the same thing. Forget it. It's, it's fine. Councilor Narkomier, thank you, your worship. Let's continue on the Paul's question, the study that you're going to be doing, Mr. Your worship for the sidewalks. And trails and many things. I'm going to focus on the sidewalks. The sidewalks. As several councillors are saying, lots of people think it's very important to have sidewalks. And if I were living in a downtown, I would think it's very important. I would think it's very important as well for those citizens living in the region. But we're approving subdivisions with no sidewalks. According to municipal requirements. Yes, these are our requirements, but that's where I'm coming to. We're praying, we're creating, we're accepting that we're not going to have sidewalks for many reasons. I'm not saying that they're not good reasons. But after we've accepted the new streets, we have new streets for the past 10 years. There's lots of development and it's good. But now, we're... As we create the regulations that we now have, that we did in 2023 and 2024, we're creating a problem for 2029 because there's no sidewalks on the streets that we, and we said it was fine not to have sidewalks. And our colleagues on the table came here and said, "We need to have sidewalks." I understand what you're saying, Councilor Kormier. My question to the CAO or to Bob, when you're going to do the study for the needs, will you take that to consideration? That perhaps come back to us to change the way that we approve subdivisions? Is it, is that far off or not? That's, that's the real question. I can add some information on that. The big development for, in the subdivisions this year, their approval, their original approval was done in 2013, 2013, 14, earlier than that, under the former regulations. And all the phases and sections of those subdivisions, that comes back to those old rules. So even today, even this year, the last phases are being built based on those old subdivision agreements in Audubon. In 2022, the subdivision guideline of the town was updated and the regulations have changed and we can't necessarily apply those new regulations. The new subdivisions in the future, applicants for new subdivisions will be subject to that. And in terms of sidewalks, there are changes. And I think that we have to respect the commitments that councils of 10 years did. They, they worked in good faith.
They did in good field, but Bob, it's good to know that going forward, give or take, so before they finish those subdivision, we could, we could have sidewalks on, on future streets. This is the goal, the same time as the street is being paid by the developer. Councilor Peter Burrow. It's to follow, build on what Councilor Kormier said, a couple of years. Last year, we discussed this problem that was under the impression, under the new municipal plan, all the new streets that were to be built, they absolutely need to have sidewalks. That's what I understood two years ago. I don't know if it changed since then, but I think it, it should, that's what it should be. No new street should be built without any sidewalks. I think for the future of the town, we have to, we need to put this in place. I don't know if it's part of that plan or the municipal, our municipal plan, but, but we should not give, it will not be in the municipal plan. So the municipal plan, we're talking about land zoning, but this one here, this is subdivision guidelines. I don't remember exactly the name in French. So this one, Bob, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. You have like the street categories? Like, like the longest one is Main Street essentially, and then it goes to smaller. I think there was one category where we did not require sidewalks. It's where there would be a good, the sex, like with five houses, we would not install, build sidewalks. All the other street would have sidewalks. I think the four categories required sidewalks, something like that. It's just to mention, like the last street that were built by developer, they're still under the old agreements and they are grandfathered in. So we cannot force them to do this at this point. But any other new municipal projects, certainly, like we want to make sure they build sidewalks and when it's possible, multi-purpose trails, et cetera. Is it the same for developers? When it's a new application for new subdivision, it will apply. Because the subdivisions that are built this year or last year or the year before, I understand, these were approved a long time ago. Eventually, there will be other, like requests. So when the developers come for their building permits automatically, it will be part of the equation. It will need like to, to build a sidewalk if the development is done according to the new subdivision guidelines from 2022. So this plan, will we see it? It's available on the website. It's with the bylaws. It's there, it's there now. Thank you. We'll see. It's a good teaching moment. Councilor Joyeux Dipri, thank you, Mr. May. Any, would be at the cost of the developer to pay for the sidewalk? If it's in the subdivision, they have to put a curbstone and sidewalks, what are the subdivision like, like the specs for, to develop new subdivision, it will have to be followed? Well, I, I think it will increase the cost for the development and houses, but there's a price for everything. Someone has to pay. And the landlords will pay, but, but certainly, there are some costs association, associated with, thank for your clarification. But the end of the story for the sidewalks. Thank you. So. What comes after the sidewalks? It's, we still have 56 minutes left. We were at the, the, the street category, like a street lighting. Street lights. For the maintenance, the budget increase of 83,500? There's a 40,500 that is coming from the, heritage, the traffic cabinet. It's on the, it's end of life. It's almost dying. So we, we, we have to replace it. Traffic cabinets for, for the person with, it's for the intersection between Handington and Main Street. It's the box. It's the controller like for the, for the traffic light. Other one just coming in. Because I wanted to paint it. If it's, if it's being replaced, yes, great. We increased the budget for... 25,000? So what are we doing with that one? We have a recommendation from a traffic engineer on this one to go with the installation. It's a half signal. It's like, it's a traffic lights, but only for... Only for the crosswalk, but it would act to help the motorists were trying to get out of the exit, the LJR school. It's an improvement. So maybe you can show me a picture like, or have a better pedestrian half signal. Thank you. For the next line, we have energy. It's a 3% increase. Well, it's... It's because of NB Power? Only 3%? Yes, for the street lights. NB Power. They are generous indeed. When, when I look at the NB Power document, they had the different rays. It's, oh my God, yeah. But that's why yesterday we saw like the water budget, it was a 20% increase. But for the, the street lights, it's 3%. So they want us to drive safely. We would be the next gap for the, for the waste collection, garbage collection. If we look at the, the, the collection supported by user fee in the one done by the Service Commission, I'm putting those two amounts together and... Because two, two line turns an amount coming from the fees, like the Service Commission will bill us. And there is also, why the minus? Because we will not, do not have this budget. How can I say that? For the province budget, I really need to identify like the fees that we will be paying to the Service Commission for the garbage collection. But in 2024, we're budgeted. It was not the Service Commission that was doing it. So that's why we have a minus $500,000. So that's why I say like, it's a difference. So we have a $300,000 increase for the waste collection. It's mainly due like for the, to the increase of the contract we, we had to sign with the extension of, of the contract for the, for the solid waste collection. Mr. CEO, no. So the line feeling, so the, the user fee, so it's a Service Commission. I think I can, could explain like reason of the negative is because they generate additional revenues because of... Circular material is using their site to recycle. Circular material paste... Circular material pastes, so generates more revenue for us. So they're reducing the, the invoice to use their landfill site. So the net, 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 we're comparing, like, to, to last year. So that's why I'm saying we're paying. Similar what we're paying before, is because we have the grant from circular materials. We pay less for landfill, but the contract, of course, is, is higher. Net, net, we are. We're closer to what we were before. And for the landfill site, well, as I mentioned, we went from fifty-six dollars per residence per year to forty-four dollars per year. Per resident per year. So it's not expensive, like, to, to landfill your way, your, your garbage for a full year. So the next gap, it's under the line. Environmental developments, local planning, so we have the contribution to the service commission or other local governments. So it's, it comes from the, uh, the service, uh, mission budget. So, thank you. So the increase for eighty-four thousand, is it the additional services? Uh, just an addition to the invoice. Additional planners on, from them, not for, for us. It's the same service. It's the same service, but they're add, adding, uh, they added to their team because, because the demand is there and. It's a cost that is shared with users. With other partners from the service commission who, who are using it. Tony Moncton and Dieppe was not using the service. It will look maybe at the possibility, because we, we're seeing. Since, over the last couple of years, like, especially with the, uh, with the, the fiasco, like, for the requests. The fiasco, like, for, fiasco might be a big word, like, for the, uh. They, they applied, and they had to apply again, and, and someone did not directly write it, and we're paying for the service. And we're hoping that the citizen gets the service he deserves. But, uh, but really, they, they pay for the service. It will look as a municipal council, but six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, it will look. We could, I'm not saying to do it alone, but maybe we could do it alone. Six hundred and thirty thousand, like, we have enough money, like. To, to give, like, a service in our municipalities, but, uh. In my, like, thirty years ago, I was part of a commission. It was called, like, the Bo Basin Commission. It was a planning commission. And at the time, they were serving more or less Capacadi and Cheydiak, more or less, maybe a little bit in Grande. So do we? And I presume we did not look at, at this, but efficiently, like, maybe it wouldn't be okay, but I, I, I think it would be worthwhile to, to look, to take a quick look. We're talking two million, six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We're good, we have good, we're getting good deal, but if we come with you, that's okay. But if we said it could cost eight hundred thousand dollars and we could encourage another municipality to, to, to follow us and have a more local service. Essentially, like, we did not do the study, and it's not something that's our, uh, that was mandated to do essentially, like. We'd remove to one partner, we support, to create our own. Our own, uh, planning shop unique to the town of Cheydiak, so the same as the city of Moncton and Dieppe. It would be possible to do it, if I'm not mistaken. It takes two, it's a two, two-year notice. That you want to withdraw from a service, but for now, it's not something that is under our radar. And Mr. Mayor, soon I will bring a motion. Not this evening, but I will bring a motion to a regular meeting that we do an evaluation. Except, like, a few informal discussion, like, a long time ago, when I was a councillor. No, no serious discussion around the table that we already have. The only thing I remember at the time and this, more or less recently, just in discussion with, with the staff. In, in the planning, there are, there are now too common, they're hard to find, and it's difficult. Even for the commission to attract them, and it's difficult for the city of Moncton, the same for, for the, uh, city of Dieppe and the Atlantic region, they are hard to attract. It, it's, it's a barrier that is there if you want to create your own. It's not that it can be done, but it's something to consider. I will bring something. Councilor Janis Komie. Just want to say I agree with Councilor Komie, because. The service is not, is not always, like, to beneficial for us, because when we're looking for a thing, would be interesting to, to see. It's, it's something the council would like to consider. We can ask the administration, like, to look at it, and to put the information together. And then we could see what the budget impact would be. If it's three times more, well, maybe. Maybe it's the same amount, but we have the in-house service with better. I don't know. It's just a thing outside the box. So. Dining service, what's have, comes after? We would be at the. Like, uh, land improvement. It's a gap of, it's a reduction, twenty-four thousand dollars. And it's because last year in two thousand twenty-four, we had to put an amount for, to install, like, the, it's the. It's that why we're preparing the budget, because we did not do anything with it, and it's not something that will be, that's in the, the plans for now. And we have a community development, uh, social for contribution to the service commission. Well, it's, it's our contribu- contribu- contribution to the service. Economic development, administration, staff, there's a gap, it represents also three percent increase. And for the incentive, we have a, an increase of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars that is explained. By the inci- the increase of the residential and commercial incentive. Other develop, economic development, the services. Is the, the fifty thousand dollars, it comes from the increase. We put, set aside fifty thousand dollars to, to, for the development of the industrial, uh, Skuduk Industrial Park. Councilor Paul Boudreau. What, what was the last, the last item was, uh. We set aside fifty thousand, we put, added fifty thousand dollars for the development of the Skuduk Industrial, fifty thousand dollars, not fifty dollars. Because I, we're crushing, so that was. So Danny, you're comfortable with that amount, because industrial park, like, we've been thinking about it for a while, and the question. Do you have any plans for eventually, to see what would be operating that park? Is it included in our budget? I did not see there any organic here. Who would take over this one? It hasn't been bought yet, but in two thousand twenty-five will, will be a great year. If, if it, if it's, let's say if it, i- i- it's, it's with us in March. It certainly want, we want to, to have some funds, like, to, to assess the governance, the management, the development plan. What is the potential and the vocation of that park? We want to make sure we have a good plan to go forward, and we want to present the option to the council, so you can take, uh, so you can take a decision with real facts. That's why we need to have to. To set aside some funds to accelerate this, you're comfortable, I could ask for three hundred thousand, so fifty thousand dollars. If we, if we need more, Councilor Boudreau, we'll do what to, we'll bring this back to the council, under special projects. If it's the willingness of the council, we even have, like, an economic development fund. So I think for. I think we're, we're, we're good to, to tackle these problems, if we have. I feel comfortable with what's being proposed today. So the incentive, I see the amount of millions. I thought it was, so I knew it would. It was reviewed, and it would be lower. Is it committed, is it committed long term? Because we had asked some questions around the table, and Roland asked that too. I, I, I kind of knew this question was asked, as we did, we modify our residential incentives, so. Or the R two development, like, from, uh, the end of August, two thousand twenty-four. Any permit that was, uh, some, uh, that were given would not qualify for incentive. All those given before would qualify. What we relied on with all the, the permits that were given, we are in the ma- uh, big, uh, big years of growth. We know it's big numbers. Hundred millions per year, with eighty-eight millions by the end of October. So these are the results, and that's why, like, our tax base is increasing, and our mandate is increasing too. To answer your question, there will be, like, uh, they will, it, it should decrease in two thousand twenty-five. For the R one, R two, because in two thousand twenty-six, the next, uh, budget year, because. This file will be closed in two thousand twenty-five, so. The other years, like, uh. To invest in reserve fund, three hundred, the thousand five hundred, I think Patricia, better memory, seven hundred thousand, not this year. So we have no request to modify the reserve fund, I think. Certainly, once the budget is adopted. We'll, we'll transfer to the reserve fund. It's where there will be, some motions will be made. We'll bring a motion for two hundred thousand dollars to, to be put in the reserve fund. Every year, it was a motion that could come out, only put the two hundred thousand dollars. I would like to see more, but we really have a fund that was completed. Would it be possible, Danny? So, how long have we been putting money in reserve fund? Four, five years? Would it be possible to see? I know the department is with the plans for the reserve fund, because. Close to two, three million, no. I think we have maybe one, one point two million, millions accumulated. It's been, like, six years, Carol. So the plans are coming. If we, if we acquire the industrial park, if we have major developments. The council, is it economic development? So, uh, is, are we digging in that pot instead of others? So these are ready, bait and discussion. Justification, if it can be justified. So we made the recommendation, but you are voting to take in those funds out. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After the economy, the. Then we, as for the tourism. So the tourism office, so the gap of a hundred and six thousand, so it's due to the. It goes to zero with the Omaro Center, because we have revenue and expense lined. So it's a net, uh, zero to the budget. Councilor Roland Komie. It was the line after, sorry. Be patient. Thank you. I apologize, Mr. Mayor. Gathering spaces. Go, go ahead, Carol. As for the, the, the camps and the parks for tourism, for tourists, we have a reduction of twenty-two thousand versus the twenty-four, uh. Twenty-two budget, but we put some money, the twenty-two, for the Rotary Park, it wasn't done, so, so it gives us, like, uh. Gives us a surplus, like, for twenty-two thousand. Tourism promotion? Apologize, I didn't put any explanation. For fifty-five thousand dollars? I, I wanted to go back, the next meeting, I do not want to give any numbers. And then we'll get, go back to those, for this gap for forty, fifty-five thousand dollars. For other tourism services. We have an increase for ten thousand dollars, and it's, it's increase. There's an amount that was set aside for the thirty-fifth, uh, anniversary of the, the Big Lobster, and we also purchased. Every, we added a five thousand dollars reserve for new requests. That could, could come, that could happen, like, during the year two thousand twenty-five. Gathering spaces, like markets and. Reduced the budget for twenty-three, it's a twenty-two thousand dollars increase, so it's, uh. Uh, people are. We plan less traveling, like, in the tourism fairs, and we also, our inventory for promotional materials. We have enough on hand, so reduce the budget, like, the purchasing of promotional items in two thousand twenty-five. Does it meet, does it answer your question? Thank you. It's more completely, because I saw market, I thought it was a farmer's market. Sorry. We'll talk about the, 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 the Cheydiak market, maybe a little bit later. The Sunday market. Councilor Paul Boudreau, so earlier, you referred to something that wouldn't be done at the Rotary Park, at the tourist, tourist, uh, office. You said, like, uh, reduce the amount. Because we put in, uh, in the, the twenty-two budget to do something, things at the Rotary Park, it wasn't done, so that's why. That's we have, uh, we have less expenses in two thousand twenty-five than twenty twenty-four, so why do we do it in two thousand twenty? Which, which item? There's a master plan for Rotary Park. What, the, the former CEO, any work that will be done to that plan, or? Once again, I will, I will say again, what you said, we really have to look at the plan. We need to have a plan first. For our investment and also to know. And align strategically, yes, it's in our target, it's. And if you remember in September, when I presented my report for phase two, it would be spread over several years. So it would not, it wouldn't have, uh, a big impact in our impacts for the Masse, Masseois. It's, it's, it's been put, it's, it's. If I refer back, like, to the plan that presented. We will have a consultant that will come back with different options. Wasn't done, I think the committee, uh, is, is decided what you wanted, but could look at another consultant? Plans were done, we paid for a consultant. I think there was one plan from one spot, but I invited to assess other spots. There was one communication that was sent to Mr. Mayor for. For an organization that might be interesting to, to get those, uh, Masseois. There was, like, a concept design that was done, but it hadn't been approved. You see what it would, could look like. From what I remember. Poor boys, okay. There's no money twenty twenty-five. It wouldn't be done in twenty twenty-five. They're not twenty twenty-five. It will not be done in twenty twenty-five. But the budget forecast for the landscaping would be, like, thirty-five thousand dollars for the, for the poor, poor voices. Um, Mrs. The Director. Now we go. It's recreation and cultural services, so the administration and staff. So there's an increase of ninety-eight thousand. It represents a three percent increase in salaries. And the superintendent for, uh, a recreation, leisure installation, we have to, it wasn't part of the twenty twenty-four budget, so they. He had, they have to be absorbed in the twenty twenty-five budget. In the, uh, once again, for salaries, it, it goes back to the. Public works, that were for salaries. Many places, so. So we, we need, like, the, the gap. Minus fifteen thousand for administration, other, and we have also a red staff, forty thousand, seven hundred and six dollars. Other, like, recreation services, staff, minus thirty-six thousand, staff, fourteen thousand four hundred. Historical sites, hundred and fifty dollars. And we do, net of all of this, it goes, it's close to. close to zero. There's an increase of four thousand, two hundred dollars. I think I guess salaries in different places, more staff and I know like to increase, uh, the, the number of staff like for, for the summer for to, to help the team for summer maintenance. It's the summer students she, she's talking about. Perfect. On other items i- in order. So the, uh, the community center, we have a gap of two, two, two thousand, three hundred and eighty-three. And we have to do like a different, uh, small repairs, like add, add the multipurpose center, not the community center, the multipurpose washroom entrance doors and et cetera. These are small renewals we have to do.
Parks and playgrounds, other, it's a gap of two hundred and some odd thousand, uh, and more. There's eighty thousand. We want to do a kids park in Skuduk. And there's the Lino Trail. There was an amount for a hundred fifty thousand. I have a, I have a question. I'm curious about something. I know what the kids park in Skuduk, that was something we planned. It says equipment, uh, that is being stored in the garage, but the Lino Trail. What does that involve? What does that involve? It's with, is it on, on the new piece of land? Yes. We'll go from the, uh, parking lot. If you've, if you're not familiar with the name of the trails, it's Camille to the first intersection. Instead of accessing private, uh, land that, uh, what they have access to right now, we continue on municipal land to join up, to expand their territory there and join up the, to the private access further on. That will avoid the problem area. Great. Is this? Will this be a trail? Will it be, it's a regularly built municipal trail, a single track? It's seen as a green trail, is seen as a municipal trail. Everyone can walk on it. Thank you. Counselor, thank you, Your Worship. Julie, regarding the eighty thousand for the Skuduk Children's Park, I would imagine that that does not include the park. It's just for the facilities. I know that a park costs a lot. I can only, uh, light up four mics at a time. That's what's great about it, given that we have the equipment. We're saving a lot of money right now and for now, it's in the conceptual phase. So right now, the plan was been presented to the committee. There's some small modifications to be made. I wasn't present at the meeting, but I know it was very lucrative. I was present at the meeting. It was great. We're just waiting on them for the go-ahead. Counselor Pau de Boudreaux, congratulations on the park in Skuduk. I have some questions for Julie. It's maybe a bit vague. I'm not sure from ahead of things or not. Uh, we speak, spoke of a green space on the new development for Rabar Street, uh, roughly. Are there money set aside for twenty twenty-five? To try to start the design or the building of that park? It's in engineering and planning. Uh, good, Pascal Poirier House. Is there money set aside to replace the tarps that be, might be another section of the budget, maybe? It's a bit further on. Yes, there's money. Okay. I'm, uh, up to that point, the tennis shed is a bit further. Mr. CEO, the, uh, the tennis shed is not included. It's not, it's not any further because it's not included. So it's zero. That's right. We were told that, uh, that the motion that we, we see all the figures for the budget deliberations, that was what was said. It's not included in the budget. That's what we're saying. Why? Why not? Right now, with potentially a rec center and a potential investment with the amount that might be asked for, there's potentially a new life that we can provide to the arena, a shared space that could be protect, uh, shared, maybe shared who, with the tennis club. There's an amount that is included for a small repair to the existing shed, so it'd be useful. But we would like to have, think more in the long term. See if there's a usefulness or a share, some sharing that could happen with the arena if we bring, uh, breed new life into it. So we received a public application, it's through three or four studies, uh, to have access to water. Is there any money reserved to look at that for twenty twenty-five? The requests from the public were there. There are studies to determine potential locations. Uh, is there any money set aside for access to water? With access to water, we, we did provide, uh, drinking water. No, no. I mean for to put wa- boats in the water. Oh my. Oh, sorry. Inaudible. Mr. CEO, is there something for twenty twenty-five? Nope. I don't have the answer. There's nothing? I don't have the answer. Well, who would have the answer? It's not in the budget. It's, 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 according to the director, it's not in the budget. For the intergenerational center plan, it's a bit further in the budget perhaps. Uh, steps three to nine, I'm not, not sure. We put an amount of three hundred thousand in the budget to do the study, which is lower, to do the business case. It's lower down, it's further down in the budget. Can we wait to get to those, uh, uh, parts? Maybe it'll answer your questions before you have them. Okay. That's good. Next. Counselor Lona Cormier, thank you, Your Worship. Am I understanding this correctly, that parks and, and playgrounds, is it the one for, uh, Skuduk with the trails at ninety-two thousand? Which one are we referring to where we want to do a trail in the piece of land that we own that Julie mentioned? That's for the Lino Trail. And where is that line? What's the figure we're seeing there? It's five hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine. Does that, and that includes both of those projects that we're talking about? Okay. In Your Worship, um, in my, uh, in my view, I'm surprised that we're being presented with a project that I haven't had, haven't heard anybody around this table. So we're looking for, looking to do a, do a trail. I know we bought a piece of land, but I didn't hear that we had the intention. Nobody on the council, nobody provided direction there. I was not, that, that meeting, if we had a direction or an orientation, is it a good idea? Is it an absolutely good idea? I'm not against the idea. That was the reason why we were buying the piece of land, but with the county, the municipal council did not provide any direction. No direction to create a trail there. If we've provided it, I would challenge, I would, you, I would, I would like to see the motion where we did this. For example, maybe other, myself and perhaps other colleagues, that's why we have budget discussions, that's we're here to discuss the budget, right? I think that, yes, it's important, but, uh, access to water is more important than that, I, I believe. And I would be ready to make a motion if it's necessary that we transfer the money to try to keep something to ensure access to water. Citizens of Chediaque deserve access to water. We've gone through all of the process procedures. We came up to, we arrived at a decision, I accepted. I participated in the decision, but now we need to try to find access to water. There are options. We can talk about that in camera at another meeting. We, I think we have to at least set aside some money to start. We need to put something in the budget to show the citizens that in, in, in April, when we voted that we were all in agreement, that we weren't going there, the consensus around the table, maybe it's changed since then, was that we wanted access to water. In Chediaque, we need access to water, uh, for, uh, all small boats and, um, uh, sailboards. I think it's time to put it in the budget. And I think that we need to push back this, uh, project of, uh, the trail, the Lino Trail. I think that should be pushed back at least by a year. And that we prioritize, my priority, Your Worship, is to try at least to have access to water. If we don't try, we can't do anything. But if we don't have any money set aside, we won't be able to try to do anything. And I think it's important. So Your Worship, I, I would like you to see your guidance. Do you want me, if you would like me to make a motion, I'm ready to do it. If we need a consensus or, I'm, uh, in your hands. Thank you, Counselor Cormier. Mr. CEO, listen, if the council wants to add some money, set aside some money to study, uh, access to water, it is certainly within your purview to do so. I am willing and ready to do the motion that said that the money that we had reserved for, well, I'm presuming it's about four hundred thousand. I'm looking at the figure. You look at eighty thousand for Skuduk. Or there's four hundred thousand that you're recommending. May I ask a question to the Finance Director? Do you remember the number amount that we, uh, that was a surplus for engineering, for transportation? Is it six eighty-five, zero, nine, three? On the lower part of the budget? It's changed with the discussion that we had. There's an amount in the budget, just to explain. That's why I've asked the question. When we were trying to balance the budget, there was a certain amount. It was about two hundred thousand that we placed in engineering services to potentially do studies. Additional ones, I, I, that I mean to say. So the studies that are not yet identified, studies that are not yet, uh, underway. We spoke, in my head, I had, I have two hundred thousand, but I don't want to lead the council, um, uh, in the, in the wrong direction. I know that we've done adjustments. I'll try to ask a, a different question. Maybe I can help you out here. Your Worship, the question that I'm, I would ask is, what is the exact amount? When you prepared the budget, what is the exact amount that we have set aside for the trails on the Lino Road? To make the trail that we're, uh, suggesting doing. It's a good idea. It's a hundred fifty thousand. So Your Worship, may I make a motion? It's not a motion. May I suggest that we remove the hundred fifty thousand from there and that we put it another line to start to work on access to water? What I'm trying to say is that we think we can do both. Well, I'll go a little further than that. That's fine. Thank you. I'm surprised that we're coming here with a hundred fifty thousand dollar request to do something that we didn't discuss at the council. I'm surprised. There's lots of, uh, applications and requests that my colleagues ask for. Paul often asks for things, not just Paul. There are other things coming out of our budgets that, that we, that if Bob needs in public works, I, I need a new dump truck. You can't know in advance. This is additional, these are additional things. So I've just been, over just been here for two years and we're talking about two years with having a playground. I know there's money in the budget for that, that Paul requested. He just asked about it. Uh, for, uh, the green space. And, uh, and other developments that, that we set aside some budget for, for a small study. I think that we should put all that there. I think it's more important to have a playground than to have a trail this year. It's great. We want to do lots of things. I'd like to clarify some, would you like to clarify something about the trail and also for the playground? The playground was planned during Victor's time, when we were doing the study, uh, for twenty twenty-five planning, given that it was a construction site. We couldn't focus anymore on, uh, the conceptual plants. It's, it's just, it's just in. And for Lino, it was really the requirement in the organization PASWA that acquired the new piece of land that we have right now. They said, uh, to add the trail. Their main reason is for the safety of users. And we're, it's related to lifestyle and quality of life people's use a lot. And two other small things as well. The, uh, Regional Service Commission did a commission lately for all of the rec directors, very recently. It's coming forward to the mayors. In terms of the studies on facilities in the region of the, uh, Regional Service Commission. Their priority is that we invest more in parks and trails. There's, where's, where there's a lack of parks and trails. So it's very important for the quality of, of life people that we invest there. So that's where that a hundred fifty thousand dollar project comes out of. Now, where the hundred fifty thousand dollars was, was looked for, the, the organization PASWA is very involved in our community. Uh, it's just volunteers. They work very hard to offer, uh, a very, uh, uh, healthy lifestyle and good, a good, advantageous lifestyle for our community and tourists. They took the steps, they took the initiative, uh, to make a conceptual plan to, uh, seek funds, et cetera. And we are going to have a grant, we're going to be able to make a, a grant application to, uh, seek out funding for eighty percent of the cost of that trail. I just want to confirm that. So the share, the hundred fifty thousand, sixty, fifty thousand dollar share would be our share. It is all of the project. It's the whole project. Great. Thank you for the information. So. May I ask a question? Certainly you may ask a question. Through you? Thank you. Perhaps you've answered it, Your Worship. Just want to understand. The organization of, of volunteers that exist in this region to develop that lot, I congratulate them, I thank them. You spoke about a grant from another organization. Can you go into further detail? Can you get, be elaborate more on that? Is it a one million dollar project for fifty thousand? No, the project is a hundred fifty thousand dollars in total. And Apasa is ready to invest some money. It's not very much, maybe four thousand, four thousand, five thousand dollars. But there's a grant, a provincial grant that we can look for, for eighty percent of the hundred fifty thousand dollars. Ah! Well. Well, you should have said that earlier. I'm really sorry. All the explanations are, the explanations are not all there. Well, okay. We lost ten minutes of our life here, so that I could be in agreement with you. You're in agreement with me? Yes, I do. I am now. I, I do know another, uh, I know another organization that'd be interested in, in investing that, can we put money in the budget somewhere for access to water? Can we put money in the budget somewhere for access to water? And maybe we won't use it, but I think we have to set, put it in there. I want to use it. But I mean, what's the amount? It's 205,000. There's 205,000. There's unbudgeted for studies right now. There's a line item to do studies. We can take from that part to allocate it, to treat that far. If there's a consensus, it's great. If not, I would make a motion. I feel it looks reasonable for those around the table. Great. Next. Councilor Janice Cormier, thank you, your worship. Pardon me. I'm probably going to talk about what you don't, the tennis shed. We've been talking about this for many years. They've been approaching us for several years. I know that it's not planned in the budget because there might be things. Can staff look at, can we rent something temporarily for them? Like a home style thing? Can we give them a rent for those months where they play tennis for the next two years? So whether we build a shed or when we decide whether or not to build a shed. It's less expensive than building a shed. Building a shed is expensive. Can we see what it would cost? Can we fit a rent, a trailer rent in our budget for them? Listen, everything's possible. You're the people who adopt the budget. We make the, we're simply making recommendations. There's an amount that we've allocated for repairs to the shed to make it usable object, if I'm not mistaken, Madam Director. We will extend its service life, but we don't recommend new construction until we explore their options. I'd like to look into the money that we're putting in to extend its life a few years. Whereas we might just tear it down in the end. Can we provide them something better for over the next few years with that money? We can study that. Thank you. We can make the business case and if it makes sense, if it's negligible. It's just, it's often brought for us and we have the duty to perhaps look if it makes sense to repair, just to repair something or if it's maybe logical to provide them something a bit better over for the next years, but in an interim basis. We had foreseen that this question would be debated. The shed, we have an expense that's similar that we recommend under capital purchases that we can perhaps change if it's really that and push back the other one later. But our recommendation is to wait to see what we can do for a more extended period of time. We're going to use the arena. Maybe we'll breed new life into it if there's a new rec center. We have to assess that option first of all, to see if it's an option we would save on certain costs. As I recall, for water and sewer, that we want to wait to see. As we're trying to delay a bit, but if you want to look at the question of maybe renting something instead of that, we can certainly explore that question. I think that, yes, we will wait, but I think they've waited long enough. And if we can put it in the budget, and if it's not repaired, I think, well, we should look into it. Thank you, Councilor Cormier. Councilor Emile O'Brien, thank you, your worship. Thank you, Janice. Great idea. It's a good alternative solution. I'm a bit disappointed that staff is mandated to look for costs to build the shed. And has it been done? Was it worth? What's it worth for the council to create a mandate? And it's not done? Have you sought out any costs for a new shed? I'm not aware of what was done and what wasn't done. There was a mandate, it was voted on, it was unanimous to look for costs for the shed. Was it done? I didn't see it. Mr. CAO, not aware. Madam Director? Yes, it was done. $300,000 to build a new shed. That's not very much. 300,000, $300,000 is not very much for a new shed. Well, it's 300,000 dollars. We were talking about removing a part of 150,000 just now. The town, I'm disappointed that it wasn't done. I'm disappointed. I like, Janice is plan B. But how much money have you set aside to repair it? Last summer, people were going through the patio, the deck is there and people were, their feet were going through it. $10,000. That was as a potential investment to update the cabano, the shed. That $10,000, if it could go on a rental, we can look into that. Something that could have toilets in it? It'd be nice to have a toilet. The largest part of the cost is at the place where they have the shed. You have to dig to bring water and sewer from somewhere. That's the, that's the big cost. I've seen the pictures. It's not right there. The sewer in your streets, but you have to bring them to your house. Well, you have to dig. You have to set, you have to install it. I understand that. It was a project that was in the five-year plan. Is that what it's worth, the five-year plan? Is it not worth anything anymore? It doesn't count, as we discussed yesterday? The five-year plan needs an update, a serious update, a considerable update to make sure that we're presenting, to do, and doing updates that is truthful, real. Or right now, we're not confident when we go to capital and the lending. They look at us, well, you have work to do. When there's somebody else telling us we have work to do, we take it seriously. And I don't want to repeat, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but we want you to make, to make informed decisions, well educated, with the proper information. And right now, we can't, we're not able to do that. The municipality has seen exceptional growth over the last few years. We've made investments in places that were necessary and sometimes it was desired. We want to paint you a picture that will tell you in a, in a clear, realistic way, where are the needs of the municipality? And as a municipality that we can't provide you that, it's not anybody's particular, it's not a mistake on anybody, that is anybody's fault. It's of many reasons. We can't operate as a staff, as administration, say we want this and that without sharing what the financial impact will be. That is why we're asking to take a bit of time so that we can assess these things and come back with a five-year plan that you can follow, that will be proper, a proper five-year plan. Right now, we can't do that. And we, should we be blamed for as administration? I'd love to take the blame for that. But I think we have people around the table where collectively, they want a clear vision of the priorities that are properly established to see where the investments have to be made. And the strategic plan has not yet been accepted. Strategic planning has not been accepted. I don't want to sound like a broken record. You can make, take decisions that you'd like, but we don't feel comfortable offering you recommendations with the lack of information that we feel we have. A question related to the shed. When was this made though, that wasn't be built? Is it just tonight? Was it a month ago, two months ago? This is a recommendation for the budget. No decision has been made. We're offering recommendations. If the council decides that the construction of a cabano is important and they want to add it to the budget and modify things in the budget, we will see to the constructions of a new building. That's what the motion was for. It was for to put in the budget. I don't know what the resolution was. I understand the resolution was to look for prices. Yes, we found the prices. Yes, that's true. You're right. I'm disappointed, but the other thing, as we saw at the start of our session tonight, and now it's nine o'clock. In the space of three years, we've gone from a debt ratio of eight with things that are planned and the things that we've done from 8%, and now we're, we're almost at 17. There's not, we don't have much maneuverability remaining. The objective would not be to hit, should not be hit 20. We should, the objective should be, let's stay far away from 20. But there are things, well, COVID, the third bit of pave costs more than the first. And it's annoying, but it's true. Councilor Rona Cormier, last question before we adjourn. Thank you. Thank you, your worship. The question is to Julie. How many members participate in pickleball? If you don't know approximately. I'm really pleased that you asked the question. I will repeat what I've said. Pickleball is in a great financial situation. Over 400 members who are active. Tennis is 100 members. That was my second question. So in answering what, the way you answered, that's what I thought you would say, roughly. I will congratulate staff for having made a decision to not present that $300,000. I think that's an exorbitant cost and I don't think that it's worth it. It's a nice to have, but it's not a must have. And I support your recommendation. And thank you for having done the due diligence and, and having presented the recommendation. And I'm totally in favor of it. And I'm ready to support it. Thank you, Councilor Janice Cormier. Would you want to propose adjournment? But before I do so, we've, we've, we're done at nine. Before I move that we adjourn, I'd like to say a big thank to the staff. The budget this year is, we really see things much more clearly to have a much more informed decision. Last year, it was. I just, I'm not blaming you. She had six weeks before she had the show. This is really setting up the stage for us. Thank you very much. I know that we become passionate and I know that we ask things and maybe, I hope you don't feel that we're attacking you, but the work that you've done so far is really appreciated and it helps us a lot. It helps us to, thank you for your comment. And I can tell you, we don't take our, our duty lightly into presenting this budget. It's not easy for us to make recommendations on things that you have maybe already discussed and debated, but it's hard to make recommendations if we don't have the proper information to guide you. Well, thank you very much. It's appreciated. Thank you very much. Moved by Councilor. Yes, Madam Director, I just want to add a small comment. Yes, it's a recommendation. Yes, it's based on something. Just to, we want to end, we need to end up with a balanced budget. To balance the budget, we, because we, we look at each department and see what they need and ultimately you have to balance the budget, but there's no choice in cutting some places. Certainly that the requests are always higher than what we can reasonably do. Yes, sometimes there are, some choices are easier than others. Sometimes it's a bit hard. So, so I just want to bring that comment forward. Inaudible. You can present your wish list to the, to the, to the Director of Finance, but she's tough. That run is already done. Once it's, we think we had made, and the CAO is even tougher. So those are three elements before it gets to you, just so you know, with the process that's been happening internally. We don't have any choice. We make really big wish lists because we see things. And all of a sudden, you have to line up with the, with the reality of what you could afford. The wallet's only so big. That's right. I thank you for your participation tonight. We are now adjourned.